Yes, yeah, they just want to thank the existing fencing. Yeah.
I'll call the planning commission regular meeting for March twentieth, twenty twenty five. I'll ask the clerk to call roll.
Paulson?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Clark?
I'm here.
Don?
Here.
Lachey?
Present.
Marina?
Here.
Inman?
Here. In front of you is the agenda for this evening. Does anyone have any changes, additions? Seeing none, we'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Seeing none, agenda's approved. In our packets, we had the minutes from our regular meeting February twentieth, twenty twenty five. Did everyone have an opportunity to review those minutes? If so, was there any changes or additions to it? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for February.
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
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 And as opposed, seeing none, the minutes are approved, which takes us to our fourth item on tonight's agenda, the public comments for agenda items. So remind everyone that is in the room and anyone who's online, you're welcome to come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, give your address, and then tell us what agenda item your comments relate to, and then limit your comments to three minutes. In the room, if there's anyone that would like to speak on any agenda items, please come up to the microphone. Seeing none in the room, do we have anyone online? I see. Whitfield? I think you have to unmute. Paul?
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Paul Whitfield, four fifty Spear Street. Just was hoping to be there tonight, but traveling for work. And we started in September working on the different language for the rental units and just wanted to say thanks for all the work and look forward to the vote tonight.
Thanks, Paul. We appreciate your patience as we work through that also. Anyone else online? Seeing none, then we will close the public comments. So we can get through the next four this fast. Next, we go to move to old business. And before we kind of begin, I'll let Luke just kind of remind everybody where we are on these three items. And I think most of us are familiar as to why they're currently on here.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So yeah, all three items in old business are special land use requests for the rental of accessory dwelling units. You'll see in the packet, I use the old staff reports for these, these three applications. And at that time, we were unable to approve due to section one five four oh two two W. Those were the new build standards, which are now no longer relevant. They no longer need to meet those standards, and therefore, all three of the applications in our new business can now be approved. And so I have some updated recommendations in front of you. We have already publicly noticed all of these and had the public hearings, so.
Yeah, so as we move to item A, which is the four fifty Spear Street, as everyone here on the commission is familiar, we brought that before us because it's highlighted in, I forget what page that's on. Four fifty Spear starts on page seven. So as we were saying to Paul, we appreciate because it was September nineteenth that the staff report was written on, on this one. Nothing has changed other than the fact that it now meets the requirements as opposed to not being able to meet them previously. So as Luke's kind of got in here, we do have a recommendation, but first we'll ask, is there any discussion regarding the four fifty Spear?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the special land use request to allow the rental of the detached ADU at four fifty Spear Street. Based on compliance with the ADU rental requirements of section one fifty four point oh nine two J, satisfaction of site plan approval standards of section one fifty one point oh six zero and positive findings related to the special land use standards of approval as stated in section one fifty four, four point zero point, excuse me, one fifty four point zero eight zero.
My second English.
Perfect. Having a motion and having a second, is there a discussion on the motion? If no discussion, then we will go ahead and ask for a roll vote.
Patrick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Lachey?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Inman?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on, next item was five fifteen St. Joseph. Evidence in your kit, starting on page twenty seven, same thing. The original packet was brought to us on October seventeenth, twenty twenty four. We have postponed it through several of the meetings awaiting the ordinance change. Or this change has now happened. We can either have discussion or we can move to a motion.
Chairman Mans, I'll make a mo- motion. I move to approve the special land use request to allow the rental of a detached ADU at five one five St. Joseph Street based on compliance with the ADU rental requirements of section one fifty four dot zero nine two J, satisfaction of the site plan approval standards of section one fifty one dot zero six zero and the positive findings related to the special land use standards of approval in section one fifty four dot zero eight zero.
Second.
Second.
Patrick? Any discussion on it? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and call the roll for the motion.
Patrick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Lachey?
Yes.
Yes.
Mans?
Yes. Third item in old business is C three oh six Mary Street. This one was more recent, started on page forty six of our packet from the memo dated December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Similar, it met all the standards except for the ones that have been recently revised. Any discussion before we move to a motion? If not?
Chairman, I move to approve the special land use request to allow the rental of detached ADU at three oh six Mary Street based on compliance with the ADU rental requirements of section one five four dot zero nine two J, satisfaction of site plan approval standards of section one five one point zero six zero and the positive findings related to the special land use standards of approval in section one five four point zero eight zero.
Yes. Support. Second. Having a motion and duly seconded, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call.
Patrick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Lachey?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Inman?
Yes. Yep. Now it moves us to new business. The first item under new business starts on page seventy in your packet. And this was a new application that has been held for a time period by Luke, similar to the other ones, but has not come before us in the past. And this one actually does require a special land use request and accessory dwelling unit. Which required the public hearing, which we already had the public hearing noticed. So at this time, we will open up the public hearing for eight twenty five Bridge Street. So, what's that?
Did this applicant not come before us two weeks ago, at least like?
No, so, so Wilma's been here a couple of times, but this is the actual public hearing. So it's never been on the agenda.
Never been a public hearing, and they were online to kind of give the support towards the ADU.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll ask the zoning administrator, kind of give us an update of eight twenty five Bridge.
Yeah, so it's the same situation as the previous three. It is a accessory dwelling unit detached that I believe this one has had certificates since September of two thousand and nine. Yeah. And we are required to issue a special land use approval for them to be able to rent an accessory dwelling unit separately, the same, you know, situation we've just been through a couple of times. And Wilma is here if you have any questions for us.
Good. Honestly, applicant to come forward if you would like.
Yourself. I've had the, the house and the cottage for a long time, and it was originally part of the Burt Center Resort that had been around.
Can you just?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead and state your name for us. I mean, we all know that.
My name is Wilma Cozel, and I live at eight two five Bridge Street.
Perfect.
Now you're efficient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good. Anyway, there's only five of these original cottages left as being part of the Burt Center Resort. Originally, my little place was named Delark. It was one of the five bird names that the different cottages had. The previous owner that I purchased the home from, they were already renting the cottage in those days, all the years ago. It was handled through the Chamber of Commerce when I bought the house. That's how you had this. And of course, for the past twenty four years, I've continued with the upkeep and maintenance. I've had added parts to the house, and each time I did, I had to take care of the historical district. I had to go by their guidelines, which I've always done. The cottage is only rented from May through October. I don't rent it all year long. And I have many guests who come back because it's a quaint little place, and it is within walking distance of downtown Sagatuck. And when I purchased property, it was my intent to eventually retire in Sagatuck and continue to rent a cottage. The additional money earned from the rental was included in my retirement planning. If this income is deleted, I may not be able to do that. And I appreciate all your assistance, and certainly, Luke, thank you very much for helping me with anything. Did any of you have any questions?
No, I said for, for myself, it seems fairly straightforward, and we appreciate you, you know, being patient as we move through the ordinance changes. And now that the ordinance changes are in place, it makes it a lot easier for us to.
Well, thank you.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Does anybody have any questions?
Seeing none, we'll move to public comments.
Okay.
On the public comments, like it was previously, if you're in the room, come up to the microphone, you would just give us your name and your address. You can limit the comments to three minutes. Anyone in the room to make comments regarding eight twenty five or eight fifteen Bridge? Seeing none online? Seeing none, then we will close the public comment section. Obviously, without having any comments, we don't have supporting or opposing. So now it's commission deliberation. Any deliberation needed? If not?
I move.
If not, we're ready for a motion.
To approve the special land use request to allow the rental of the detached ADU at eight two five Bridge Street based on compliance with the ADU rental requirements of section one five four point zero nine two J, satisfaction of site plan approval standards of section one five one point zero six zero and the positive findings related to the special land use standards of approval in section one five four point zero eight zero that are documented in the staff memo dated March the fourteenth, two thousand twenty five.
We have a motion, we have a second deliberation on the motion, seeing none, we will move it to a roll vote.
Patrick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Lachey?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Yes. And that concludes the public hearing regarding eight twenty five Bridge. And Wilma, thanks for your presentation for keeping that in the community. Next, we're going to move into some of the items. When we first saw it on the agenda, I know obviously, kind of, if you look at, you go, wow, that's a lot to throw in for one night. I think the one thing that you're going to hear from both Luca and David is that some of these, we're really just kind of wanting tonight to introduce it, to have some kind of discussion as far as direction as to where we want to go, and then talk about some planning for down the road as to would we want to do this one first, like in April, May, this one potentially in June. So that's really what we're looking at for these next items for the most part. So the first one is for the review of the zoning districts, which has been one of our priorities, and it also kind of lines up with one of the priorities of city council. Luke, do you want to kick it off, or should we just turn it right?
Sure, yeah. So, yep, like you said, the review of our commercial and residential districts is a high priority for city council. And so this is in front of you tonight for just general discussion of, you know, maybe what you would like to see brought back or a sort of timeline you'd like to see this, this be done in. One of the things that we should consider is obviously the master plan is also a, is also a priority. And do we want to review our districts at the same time as we are, you know, performing the master plan update, or is this something we want to review afterwards? We certainly can do it at the same time, but obviously, in some cases, we might be putting the cart before the horse. So I'll turn it over to you guys. Unless you have something you want to add, Dave?
Yeah, Dave, because I think you've got an excellent memo.
Well, I've given you a lot of reading material for this evening, and I'm glad to be here just to, to work through these memos and hopefully get some guidance on how we can help over the upcoming months on these next five items on your agenda here. So as mentioned in the zoning district memo, we, we did look at the, the commercial districts to some extent during the waterfront preservation district analysis. And probably one of the best ways to, I think, accomplish the goal of assessing the residential and commercial districts is to really do a deep dive into each and compare each district against the intent statement and against the, really the built environment of where, where those districts are designated. And with that, when we look at each district, I put a number of bolts here on things I would look for when doing that assessment. We want to look to see, are there uses, are there allowable uses? Are they compatible with the existing area? Are there concerns with existing permitted land uses that could possibly be classified as special land uses? Let's just say that say bed and breakfast or a home occupation or something like that. Maybe in some cases, they're permitted uses, but you'd rather have them come to the planning commission because there could be some special circumstance or operational issue that it causes concern. We could reclassify uses. Are there uses that you just don't feel are appropriate? Maybe you've seen them in a certain district and you say, you know what, that's just better for somewhere else. Let's not promote the expansion of this type of use in the district. It's important to look at the dimensional requirements. So if we're requiring a certain setback or a lot coverage, you know, what does it look like as compared to the existing built environments? Let's just say we look at a specific zoning district, and all of the lot coverages average, you know, sixty, seventy percent, and we're saying we need thirty percent lot coverage. Should that be adjusted to reflect, reflect the existing conditions? In some cases, a zoning district is intended to transform an area. In, in other situations, it's mainly to, to embrace what's there and try to ensure that, that what goes in next and on other vacant lots or redevelopment opportunities that it's, it's compatible with, with what's in that district. So looking at the land uses and the dimensional requirements compared to what's there currently and compared to what you want it to be in the future, i- is really, it's a good way to look at it in terms of that analysis. Second, I think it's, it would be important to, to really put your, your land uses and your dimensions in, in a table so that we can compare across districts. So we may, we, we have a lot of different commercial and residential districts for, for a, a city with a fairly small geography here. So we, we want to see to make sure that there's, there's enough distinction between those districts. If we find that there are certain districts that have that are ninety percent or more, or, or the majority of the requirements are generally the same, it, it may be advisable to, to combine districts or consolidate, consolidate. Or we may find that, hey, these, these two districts are very close, but we understand these two areas on the map or, or in the actual, these neighborhoods are completely different. So we may want to create more distinction between those districts based on the dimensional requirements or land uses. So this is a pretty straightforward exercise. It's something that we could jump into pretty quickly if, if you wanted to. Obviously, we're going to talk a bit more about the master plan tonight and the, the joint effort in, in how we are going to work with our neighbors and moving forward with that project. And that might be something that would take a couple of weeks or even a month or two to, to see if there's going to be interest in the, in the tri-communities plan. So this is something we could certainly jump into. In terms of timing, Luke mentioned, you know, we don't want to put the cart before the horse. And when I think about that, it's, you know, we don't want to make changes in zoning districts that, that should be considered during the master planning process. So if we're looking to re-envision an area or create a new district to satisfy a need, a lot of times, when, when you do a, a, a change of that significance, it should be based on, on the master plan recommendations. But if we're, if we're cleaning up, if we're ensuring that the, the uses and the dimensions are consistent with the intent statements, there's a lot we can do to make things more compatible, more appropriate, without actually updating the master plan first. We could also do it at the same time in the master plan. You'll notice in the master planning memo later on, I did mention it is important to have a good understanding of our zoning districts so that when we do the future land use planning process, that you're, you're really looking at the, the future land use category and it's corresponding to one, maybe two zoning districts. So it, we, we will have to do some sort of, of higher level zoning analysis during the master plan as well. So I think we can jump into this quickly if you want, or we can hold back and kind of work it with the master planning process or, or do it after the master planning process. I think the overall scope is probably not as, as significant and lengthy as the master plan. But the, the first thing we would do is, is I think this, this deep dive into the comparison between districts and the comparison of, of the district requirements versus the built environment.
Yeah, and then for the, anybody who's kind of followed the commission over the last couple of years, and so on, that's been here for the entire time period. Part of the reason why this became one of our priorities was we created them at the waterfront preservation district, and that took Water Street South and then Water Street and Water Street North, and it kind of combined them. And then during the process, while we were creating the waterfront preservation, it was brought before us that there was a section of Water Street South and Water Street North that were not waterfront properties. And they felt that they should not be lumped in with the waterfront preservation, the rules that we had for like keeping visuals, you know, for the water and those type of setbacks. So we ended up carving those parcels out. When that, when that occurred, we said we could either leave, and if you recall, it's just that little half block over here on Culver for Water Street South, and then just the block and a half on the north, on the east side of Water Street for the north. And we'd be able to leave them as separate districts, or we could possibly merge them in. I think the feeling was at the time that there really wasn't any need for them, that they probably could conform close enough to some of the surrounding commercial zones. And also the fact that we have in Water Street North, we do allow up to a one hundred percent lot coverage with no setbacks. And I believe that was one of the things that we kind of discussed, that is that really what we'd ever want to see, while there's no plans currently for making any changes to those parcels? If there was to be something come before us, and it had a hundred percent, would we really want to see a building in that section of downtown? And so therefore, you know, we put that as a higher priority. So I kind of feel that at a minimum, I would like to see us kind of addressing those two. But if we are looking and saying, well, we're going to merge those into either city center or into the CRC, it's like, well, then we got to look at those, which basically means you're looking at all four, you know, of the commercial districts to kind of, and so if you're doing it, might as well be a full review to kind of say what's allowed in one versus what's allowed in the other. Does it make sense? What's a special land use in one? Was it? And so that was kind of my thought was, starting with the commercial, and then we always could expand it out to the residential. Other thoughts from me?
I think based on the size of the districts that you were speaking of, Water Street South and Water Street North, it'd be pretty easy for us to look at all of the individual parcels and see how they would fit, you know? Because one thing we don't want to do is create any kind of non-conformity, especially with use. So we could, it should be pretty easy to put together a list of how, you know, if they were to transition to the nearest districts, I think Water Street North is CER, Water Street South is obviously city center. We could see how they fit in there and, and bring that back for sure.
Chair, so, so when we went through the preservation, I, I thought that was going to be very easy when we did it, and it ended up being a little more difficult than I thought it was going to be. What David suggested was with the, doing all the, the charts of the different zones so that you could do some real good compares, I think it's really important. I think it's important to do now before the master plan because I think some of those things will come up. So I, I, I'm in agreement to wanting to do that.
And I do think the chart, like we've been saying, is totally useful, where we can kind of have each of the two that we're primarily looking at next to. So it's like all four of them kind of listed in one chart. What are the lot coverage? What's the setbacks? And then what are the approved uses? What are the special land uses? And then we just clearly look and say, does this make sense? And and then make a proposal for any changes that we would like to make.
If the chart, it's really helpful too.
Me too.
At least the starting point, and then inside, we'll take bites, or it'll all leave the whole thing. Obviously, there's some things you should not do until the master plan is made in discuss, but there's cleanup, sure.
I agree.
And I liked this comment about sometimes you do it for maintenance of what's really there, and then you, other, you look for a vision of what we'd like to go going forward. So I think that chart would help us to be able to do some of that. I, yeah, I agree as well. But I think that if, you know, from what I'm hearing, that makes a lot of sense, right, to take some baby steps. And we know we have some, you know, low hanging fruit that's going to really help clean some things up that you just described, and we can tackle those. I think if we're going broader, we're going to go start going across, you know, all of our residential zones or what have you. I think having the master plan done at that point in time would make sense to me. So if we're going whole scale, but I don't think, you know, we can stage it, right? We can get, you know, tackle the easy ones or the ones that make a lot of sense to hit first.
Right, the ones that kind of been a priority. And again, the commercial, residential, I know some people have said to me, well, there's not that many residential zones. And I'm like, yeah, but there's questions on some of our residential's that do, they really exist. And I guarantee soon as we start covering residential, we're going to have questions of, should that be an R one, and should this be changed? Because if it gets changed, it's no longer within the short term rental. So the residential one, I think, is more of a in conjunction with the master plan, in my opinion, whereas the commercial is more of an immediate need because we created a new zone last year and we just didn't have time. Otherwise, it would have already been handled. Hundred percent. So Dave, what do you think the timeline would be on? Would that be a, a chart we could have in the April meeting? At least have the chart, and then we can have a discussion if we need to make recommendations, if we could have that in the May?
Yeah, I, I think we could probably have something preliminary next month. Would you like to at least have a preliminary look of, of all the districts at the next meeting or, or, or just commercial? I think if, if we, if we did all the districts, we can do that in a preliminary manner and then say, hey, let's look at these ones
Right.
a little bit more in depth. And we could then, we might have to do some more, you know, on the ground or by aerials analysis of, of the uses, you know, based on, on review of aerials, driving around. So I guess if we, if we get you something preliminary in all the districts, we can decide if where we want to narrow it down first and what we want to.
Oh, that'd be great. I just didn't know. We got a number of items here. We're going to kind of turn to you and say, well, can you get us information on that? So I didn't want to put everything onto you saying, okay, but for April, we want to see it all. Or if it's just, but if you think you would have time to kind of create an overview for all, you know, break it down like one chart for the commercial and then a separate chart for the residential that we could start with, that'd be great.
Yeah, how about I'll, I'll begin work on it and, uh, running with you and Luke, and maybe we could see how much we could have available for April. If, if we're not in a position to, to distribute, we can shoot for May, but we can make every effort to, to get you something, the preliminary review in April.
Okay. Are we all in agreement?
Yes.
No, that's fine. I, I do have a question, if I may. Luke, you said something, and I, I may just not be clear on it. You were talking about Water Street North and South, and you said something about we do not want to be, do, in, in actions we take, we do not want to create a non-conforming use. Is that?
Yeah, we definitely don't want to take, you know, something that's conforming in Water Street North but isn't in CER. I mean, obviously, there may be some properties that are currently, they conform to the Water Street North regulations with regards to use, but they might not in the CER district. And that's just something we want to consider. Because if we take a property which is conforming and we make it non-conforming, that just is, it gives that property issues. If they apply for, I'm not even sure that they can expand. If, if your use is non-conforming, it makes any kind of, you know, additions or expansions.
Are we, are we legally prohibited from doing that, or is it a matter of policy, or is it they would be grandfathered in as non-conforming, but any future development of that would, would cause a problem? Which of those options, which of those things apply?
Well, I think, I think it's just best practice to try and avoid non-conformity where you can. I don't think that, I, I, I think Trent's.
Yeah, sorry, Luke, I don't mean to cut you off, but there, there'd be no, there'd be no legal reason, like prohibiting you from doing it. It'd be similar to if you amended a zoning ordinance to. It'd be similar to if you amended a zoning ordinance to require something different that then created a non-conformity. I think Luke's point is that, like you would just be, if you combine the two districts, for example, into one cohesive thing, you may create a non-conformity out of a property that was perfectly conforming under the previous regulations. And it would create headaches. But there's nothing that like makes it so you can't change your regulations, which would then create a non-conformity.
My thought of this is that we have so many districts. And some of them are literally the size of a block. And from a policy standpoint, from a good public policy use of a city, somebody coming in and saying, I want to do something, any number of reasons. Simply not combining two otherwise compatible districts because one district has a building on it that is currently conforming. You know, I just want to keep that, I wanted to know, thank you to our city attorney. I wanted to know whether we are prohibited or whether it is just a headache that we would probably want to avoid. And in my mind, you know, those are two very different things. So, thank you. Dave, David, it looks like you were ready to say something, sorry.
By everyone, and I think what we want to do is make sure that we understand the non-conformities that might result. So we don't want to unintentionally cause a non-conformity without studying an area. But there may be a reason that for making, that you're taking out of use and creating a non-conformity. Just it may not be appropriate for an area. And while it can continue on as a non-conformity, the long-term survival would not be promoted by that change. So I think through that analysis, we can, we can call out areas. And then through your, and your knowledge of these blocks, you may know something that I can pick up on an aerial or as I drive around as well, so.
It strikes me that, and I don't have the history of this, and but it strikes me that what's happened with the zoning is that districts have been carved out over time. Smaller and smaller districts have been carved out over time to satisfy particular needs or particular desires of certain things happening in town. I, when I first moved to town and looked at the zoning map, I was gobsmacked at the sheer number of colors. I could add up the number of colors, was it 20 some? I don't know, some ridiculous number. And the gradations of pinks and reds and oranges and greens. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to figure out what the heck is going on with a lot of these. So that's not enough reason to merge districts. But I think there is certainly some considerable work that could and should be done. But I like the idea of rather than just like jumping in and doing this all in one thing, doing a piecemeal, doing a little hanging fruit first, doing the master plan, and then coming back and seeing this. Because doing the master plan will allow us, excuse me, allowing the master plan to backstop us on any future changes of zoning is also a good idea. So.
Sure, and I'll, oh, sorry, Bobby.
I think what David just said relative to intentionality.
About what I'm saying?
Intentionality. I mean, we should understand, obviously, what we're doing. And if there is that kind of dilemma, we just need to, we just need to be intentional about what we're doing and understand what that is.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
And maybe we have a cheat sheet or a summary of our non-conforming regulation when we have that conversation. So that we know that specifically a non-conforming use, sometimes they can, they're limited in their expansion, sometimes they can't expand at all. If we create a non-conforming building, we have limitations on what way they can expand and the direction. Not creating a higher degree of that non-conformity. So we can have a, we do a briefing on our non-conforming regulations before we get into that conversation.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll just confirm the alteration of a structure possessing a non-conforming use that they can't be enlarged or extended at all. So my point was not that let's, we can't do it if we're creating a non-conforming use. But if we, you know, look at this chart and figure out we're creating 20 non-conforming parcels, then maybe we want to consider a different route. So.
And I think that's to David's, we can look at maintenance or vision. Is we need to fix it so that they're not non-conforming? Or if it's, if it affects what we feel is the right vision, then we may have to have a different decision.
Yeah, because when you, you'll see it when you see the chart. Like if we're looking at Water Street South and you're saying, well, does it fit better into city center? And when you start doing the comparison, virtually everything that's allowed in Water Street South is in city center with even some other opportunities that would still make sense. Because the reason a few of them, like Parks is actually in Water Street South. The Parks was in there because it used to have waterfront. You know, but Parks wouldn't be in the city center. So that may be something that no longer would apply. But for the most part, it's going to, you're going to see it's pretty easy for the south. North is a little more questionable as you roll it into CER. But and then it's, do we still need to commercial? My guess is yes, but we can at least discuss that at some future point.
I think the last thing I'll say, I think the last thing I'll say on this is that I think our obligation, at least I feel our obligation as a planning commission is to move our city forward and look projectively, proactively, rather than simply maintaining the status quo and or trying to carve out what may make certain people happy in this town. And so I think, and I'm not looking to punish anybody, penalize anybody, make anybody's life worse. But if we can, as a city, move forward and make this a better zoning outlier, that's the wrong word. Then I think that's, that's part of what the planning commission's tasked to do and our city council as well.
Correct. And I think when you look at a couple of the zones that were left, you know, all the zoning starts off, and I was rereading it this week, you know, with the whole generalities, both Water Street North and Water Street South really focused what the generalities were, was the waterfront properties. And those are now in their own districts. So the ones that are remaining don't even really relate to, you know, what the, why the zone was there. So it's, so we're, I think we're all in agreement on that. All right, anything else we want to discuss on review of zoning districts? All right, David, so then we'll move forward. There's another memo that was included in here. I think it came up in one of our meetings. I think the next thing is actually to get that priority chart. Did you have anything you wanted to talk about on that?
That's just some.
That was just a kind of, so that we can align up.
Exactly.
Any future, you know, anything else?
Right, so we're on page 84 was the priority chart that I think many of us have seen. I know, and we've kind of, Luke and I were talking and we're open to what other people would say. When we kind of looked through it, what stood out was, you know, again, the review of the zones, the master plan, the potential as they put in there, you know, on parking. I don't see it as a priority, but that could be something at some point we would possibly look at, and especially if we're looking at zones and making changes. Do we currently have some initiatives in place that would allow somebody to say, hey, I'd like to put in, you know, a parking structure? Or do we want to limit a parking structure? If somebody said, hey, I want to take this building down and I want to build a structure. You know, these might be things that will kind of come up during zoning that relates to parking. So that's one of the priorities that they also had.
Mr. Chair, also, if you recall, the prior city manager raised to us, I thought an interesting point that I had not thought of. If anybody wants to do new development, that they have to factor in the parking implications of that, which we haven't looked at. I'm not saying we jump on that.
I know.
I thought that was a worthwhile aspect of parking also.
And so I know that on their priority was master plan, the zoning, and then sign regs, which we also have on our tonight's thing to talk about. And then the parking. So when people would look through the priorities, did you see anything else that council had that kind of related over to planning? Okay, so that's why that's in there on page 84. On 85 in the kit, I guess this came up, maybe during one of our discussions, was it? Regarding the whole use of cooking, when we talk about an ADU, where they talk about having a separate, a finished way. Where is it at there? Oh, yeah, the independent cooking, bathing, and sleeping. And so Dave, you kind of put this memo together regarding the cooking. Luke, did you have anything you wanted to say on this before we turn it over to Dave?
No, I, I think that the question was brought up, should we have a stronger definition for cooking? You know, we have this section that says, for the purposes of the section, the floor area of an accessory dwelling unit is the total gross finished floor area intended for living, sleeping, bathing, eating, and cooking. And obviously, we may not have strong definitions for what cooking is, but we do have a strong definition for what a gross finished floor area is. And so I think as staff, we didn't foresee any issues with not having, you know, not looking at these definitions. And I don't think we're going to run into any issues. So we're not suggesting any changes at this time. But obviously, the question was brought up. And so if that's the direction you want to go, then we can, we can look into it.
So I'll just make a comment. The, with what just happened with all the ones we had on hold and we went through, I think there's been some unintended consequences that we've been cleaning up. This is something that could be similar. If we run into an issue at that point, I think we could do a similar type of action. But I agree, I don't see anything really, we haven't had anything before us yet. But if something were to come up, then we could move it up with the list a little bit, but.
Yeah, and I think the building standards would always kind of factor in.
Yeah, Michigan building code.
Somebody came and said, okay, I give them a hot plate, is that independent cooking? You know, then it'd be up for us to kind of evaluate. But I don't want to start making changes that stipulate what you have to have to have an independent sleeping room, an independent cooking area, and independent bathing.
Really, one of the main points is that an accessory dwelling unit is a dwelling unit as defined. So because it's a dwelling unit, it needs to be something that's fully, it can be habitable year round. It could not just something that is for an overnight stay for guest accommodations or just a vacation, but somewhere, something where someone could live there year round with full bathing, bathroom, kitchen, living facilities. And if there was ever any intent to have something that was more like, you know, just a overnight accommodation without cooking or something like that, we'd have to look at that, maybe call it something different, like an accessory accommodation or something like that. But otherwise, it is treated as a dwelling unit and would need to be building code and zoning for having all three of those components.
Doesn't building code have any requirements for what constitutes independent cooking?
I believe, Luca, we were talking about this a little bit earlier. I believe that the minimum is for there, it actually be wired appropriately so that you could put in a range. I believe that the range doesn't actually have to be there. And this is something that I think two, one or two years ago, city manager and I worked on this for a different issue. And we looked into some of the HUD definitions and building code. And it really, it was mainly that it could be there. I mean, a hot plate and proper wiring seemed to be at that time, meet the absolute minimum, even though it may not meet our expectations of what a kitchen is. I think that there's some gray area there that could probably use some more research. But we're basically just relying on whatever building code says for, for, you know, what is a habitable dwelling unit.
Correct.
So I guess with a few, like, what is the opinion of city staff? Let's say I'm going to construct an accessory dwelling unit on my property. And I'm going to come to you and say, okay, this says I need, you know, independent cooking. What went up the fire?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to look at, obviously, the dimensional standards and whatever other, you know, requirements for the district. And it's something that is going to be tackled by the building officials. Essentially, once they get a zoning permit from me, we also don't have standards for sanitation. You know, I don't, there's nothing in here that says you have to have a bathroom, but you're not going to get an occupancy permit without it. So it's just something that, yeah, if you have a section that says kitchen, I'm going to, that box is ticked for me. But if I send that to, to the guys at Michigan Township Services and they're not content with what you're calling a kitchen, that's between you and them.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, so we have an agreement, we really don't need to have any additional changes or definitions at this time. Moving on, the next one is update on sign regulations. I asked Sarah and Luke, and I thank Sarah for printing this off in front of everybody tonight because some people have the computers, some do not. In our booklets, these booklets that we get when you become a planning commissioner, doesn't have the sign section in it, it just has our zoning. So she did print off the one section, the 150 dot 30 that is the regulations for our signs, just in case there's any conversations that want to come up. What was that? Did I say something wrong?
No.
Did you say part of it was missing?
No, no, I was saying, in our booklets, we don't have like these, it's not the complete, it's not everything printed, it's just the zoning stuff that relates. Our master plan is in these binders and then all of our zoning. But the, what this section, the 150 dot 30 was not. And so I asked if it could be printed, just in case we had questions as to what are our regulations currently on signs? This was brought up, I think, to the city council as well as David's now written a memo for us. Luke, I don't know if you want to introduce more to this and then turn it over to David, but the memo starts in there on page 86.
Sure, I think the, again, another council priority. The issue is that we're not allowed to regulate signs based on content. And our temporary sign regulations do a lot of just that. So essentially, this is us putting the issue in front of you and asking for direction on what you'd like to see. Maybe we just take a crack at cleaning it up and present you with something? Or maybe you have some specific ideas for what you want to see?
Well, I have a question on it. Several, several, I mean, I guess, you know, I saw in the memo the rule. Can you kind of walk us through? There is a big difference between a political sign, a real estate sign, a for sale sign, a garage sale sign, and not be able to stipulate different rules for each. I don't, I'm kind of lost as to why not. And I realize there was a ruling, but so what do you try to say that every sign has? I mean, like right now, I like the fact that it will say political signs need to be taken down within, you know, 10 days of the election or two days. If you just had a general, then how do you put a regulation onto how long it can stay up? I, so I guess that's what I'm just, walk us through this.
Sure, well, I gave a brief overview of the Town Gilbert's case, the Reed versus Gilbert. And I may rely on Trent, while I think Trent's hand is up, so he may want to chime in on this. When the city attorney's here, I'm not going to jump too much into case law. But the general idea is that we really can't make the distinction between the messages of a sign in our sign regulations. And Trent, do you want to jump in on the case a bit?
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off, David. I think your memo was spot on. I just wanted to explain sort of the holding of Reed. It essentially says that if you have to read the sign to determine if it's subject to the regulation, then that's when it kicks into the content base. It doesn't necessarily hold that you can't do that, but it does say that that would be subject to strict scrutiny. And if you think about it, it's First Amendment expression. And so whenever you're regulating a fundamental right, like First Amendment expression, you're going to trigger a higher level of judicial scrutiny, which then makes it harder for the city's regulations to be upheld. I think David's memo mentions that you have to have a compelling reason and it has to be narrowly tailored to that reason. And so whether or not something is content based starts to cut into regulating First Amendment expression, which is, because I agree with you, Steve, that I think it makes sense conceptually, like a political sign or and things like that. But because of the constitutional concerns, it does lead to a higher level of judicial scrutiny. The way you can still regulate things like the duration or the location or the size of the signs is what's called time, place, and manner restrictions. And those are subject to intermediate scrutiny, so a lower level of judicial scrutiny. And those are routinely upheld when challenged. The intermediate scrutiny standard is a little bit softer. It requires, you know, an important governmental interest and you have to be not regulating more speech than is necessary to achieve that interest. And so the way the case law sort of breaks down is it talks about leaving open ample channels for communication or alternative channels for communication. And so generally, sign regulations now after the Reed case have to be time, place, and manner restrictions, which can be a lot harder because you're grouping together signs into more general categories. For example, like those political signs that you'll see during elections, you can regulate those based on the duration that they're put out, 60 days, 30 days, things like that, or the actual signage. Sometimes I've seen regulations where they'll regulate based on the total square footage of signage you can have in your yard. So temporary signs maybe could be in your yard for, you know, 30 days and they can't exceed 24 square feet of total signage. It doesn't obviously prohibit those political signs or things like that, but it does provide some mechanism to enforce if it becomes a nuisance. And so I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that's kind of just a general walkthrough of this case law.
Is our current sign ordinance in violation? Do we, do we absolutely need to do something?
Yeah, so there are provisions now that I would not feel comfortable enforcing under because of this. For example, we, the definitions are a good example. I think I have them pulled up here, they're under 140, 154, 140. So again, going back. So again, going back to that Reed case about if you have to read the sign to determine if it's subject to the regulation, it's subject, it's going to be subject to heightened scrutiny or strict scrutiny. Political sign obviously is one, opinion sign is another one, construction sign. Scrolling down to one fifty four point one forty one G, I believe, yeah, G four, it regulates flags. Official national, state or local, you know, flags, that requires you to look at the flag and decipher whether or not the content is a national flag, like an American flag or something of that nature. You know, fraternal organizations, societies. And so those are the the sort of problematic regulations. And the temporary sign ones are tend to be more content based even. As I sort of mentioned, the construction signs, garage sale signs, election signs. And so those, if they were challenged, if we tried to take enforcement action against someone who had an election sign in their yard under these provisions, those, because they are referring to the content of the sign, would be subject to strict scrutiny and it's unlikely that they'd be upheld. And so it invites litigation, it leads to the ordinance being struck down, that sort of thing.
So in many cases, what we do as a approach of this is we just standardize review of temporary yard signs. We just, we define them as as basically what they are, a sign that is temporary, temporarily posted on a property, built of this type of material in general. And then what we typically do is we say during any time of the year, you can have X number of signs, this setback, this size and so on. And then there might be other times, you know, there might be other conditions, such as if you have an active building permit, we may say you can have one extra temporary yard sign during during an active building permit, active project. Or during, like Trent suggested, or thirty, sixty days ahead of election to seven or 10 days after election, you may have unlimited temporary yard signs. But whatever the case is, it doesn't matter what type of content they put out there. So during election season, if we said you can have unlimited signs, they could all be, you know, go lion signs. And we really wouldn't enforce that because we're just talking about the number and how long they can be there in their placement. So we don't, if we if we blur our eyes and we can't read them, that shouldn't be any issue with code enforcement as long as we can count and measure.
Did the case at issue differentiate between residential and commercial? And the reason I'm asking that is because this city has, for some reason, sandwich boards popped out at me. This city has a pretty strict ordinance on not allowing businesses to put certain types of signs out in front of their business and that type of thing. Is there a difference between commercial and residential?
So the the commercial speech generally is subject to intermediate scrutiny. And so I'd have to like, I don't know if the Reed case specifically made a distinction based on it, but you can regulate commercial speech a little bit differently than private expression. But with that being said, you still have to have the justification for it, right? We can't just do it because it's there. We have to, we have to be narrowly tailored to advantage substantial government interest. So I had to look at the sandwich signs exactly to see like what that was. But there, so there is some distinction between commercial and private expression just based into what level of scrutiny is applied. But it's not necessarily inherent to that, just the Reed case. It's it's just the larger jurisprudence.
Gotcha. And just in that regard, final point on that, you know, have the, if our staff is go look at it, if Dave's go look at it, if our attorney's go look at it, just be cognizant that there might be a difference between what we, what the city wants to be able to do in our commercial districts versus what people want to do in their residential districts in terms of signs.
Absolutely. So Dave, in this one section, but it's you or Trent. So like in one fifty four dot one forty one, which is the sign requirements, it's in the zoning. When it gets to item H, this will be I, the temporary signs, you know, it just says, temporary signs should be regulated by one fifty dot three zero. So that that automatically brings this into the zoning?
I, yeah, it's interesting that the temporary guard signs are regulated outside in different parts of city code, so.
Why are they not all part of the same?
A lot of times, and I think in most cases, sign regulations are included in zoning. There are some some benefits to including sign regulations outside of zoning because Trent could probably elaborate on this a bit more. But outside of zoning, a sign that is established lawfully would not have the same nonconforming rights as if it were established in under zoning. So it, under a police power ordinance, you'd have more authority to, you say, this is no, this sign is no longer permitted and they wouldn't be subject to the same type of nonconformity protection. Now with that, I mean, that that's mainly going to be for, I think, more important for for more permanent structures. So temporary yard signs, again, I'm not sure exactly what the strategy was, but it may have been to have more authority to to say, hey, we're going to regulate them this way and we don't want them to be grandfathered in or legal nonconformity protection.
Is it easier to change if it's outside of the zoning, like in the one fifty dot three zero? Councils, easier for councils to be able to change this as opposed to trying to go back, there's no public hearing?
It wouldn't need to go through a planning commission process with public hearing as outside of zoning. But I think it's something that we we could talk with Trent and city staff is, do we want the these regulations to live in the zoning ordinance or in in one fifty thirty? And so there may be pro and cons to both approaches. But I think that we can chat about that and determine if if we should just shift it all to zoning.
Yeah, I generally agree with with David, David's points. I've mostly saw them in zoning ordinances, so I think that's pretty standard. I would imagine that the trying to avoid nonconformities, it was the reason, but it's hard to hard to speculate on that. But it is pretty unusual to see it outside of zoning, especially when the other half of it is in zoning. So I think we should probably make make those align.
That was kind of my general feeling was, especially if we're now talking about limiting it down to where you can't break the difference between, you know, construction signs or residential signs or political signs. If it's just going to come down to a number of signs, spacing, time period, then it could actually go right into the zoning as opposed to having it referenced over to someone that's outside of zoning. Thoughts?
Agree.
Sounds good.
So near, near term goal for you, is that something we should begin sooner than later?
I would, before we get sued?
I was going to say that's probably makes sense. Because I think it's on the, it's on a city council priority one also is the sign ordinance. I would say like if you could draft something up that would be generic, that could kind of give us an idea as to options that we could discuss, you know, it could be by the next meeting, definitely by May.
Yeah, I think we can work together to develop the framework and really then kind of have a list of questions. Because in some cases, we may have, you know, a political sign versus a yard sale sign might have a different setback or a different size. So we're going to look at how, find out what should be the standardized setback, the standardized sign size and so on. So we'll have to really make the assessment of what is the best requirement. So I think we'll give you some options based on the comparison of the various sizes and setbacks and dimensional requirements, so that you could say, you know what, this is the best one. So kind of, I think what we could do is maybe give you a worksheet to to narrow down what the requirements would be for that new standardized temporary yard sign regulation.
Right, and things to kind of consider, because if all signs had to be the same size and you could have a limited number, but there's different ones, like if somebody's got a rental property and they've got apartments for rent, it may be more than thirty days that they don't have a renter, you know. Then you want to say, oh, you gotta take that sign out in thirty days. So it's, but if we can't make a distinction between what's rental and what's opinion or political, then we got, we got to factor all those in if you're setting down maximums as far as where you company can place and how long can it stay up? Because it's different for each different type, as far as I'm concerned. But if type's removed.
I'm just trying to understand, and probably straying off topic, but it's going to, you're going to have a tough job because this, right now, the zoning administrator approves, right? All temporary signs. So potentially, somebody could come up with a sign that has some very offensive content. You can't discriminate based on that offensive comment, content. Similarly, the city, when it approves temporary signs for film festival or whatever, it's no longer for the film festival because you're not looking at the content, it's just a temporary sign.
Also the case.
Wow.
I know. I can, yeah.
And there is some ability to to regulate threatening and profane messages, so that's something.
Just using that as kind of a.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
Worst case thing, but I figured there are some other ways around that.
Yeah.
No, I would say a worksheet would be good and just things to kind of think about, then we could kind of move it forward. Next item on the agenda was.
Okay, what else, I'm sorry, based on just saying, I'm sorry, just pop my head. So the city approving signs, it's not they're approving the sign, they're approving placement, correct?
Yeah, if we, if I get a.
The, the.
Yeah, if we use, right, yeah, if we use a permanent sign as an example, yeah, I'm looking at the setbacks, any kind of dimensional regulations there. You know, we have different standards for attached and freestanding and projecting and all sorts of things. But yeah, I don't, I don't look at, I don't look at what it says. It's just a square sign. Now, you know, the historic district are going to look at aesthetics. But again, even they're not saying, it's not specific to content, that's more materiality, so.
Okay, thanks.
And one follow up to, in most ordinances exempt temporary yard signs from permitting, that you still, they still have to comply. And if there's an issue, they could, it could be enforced. But in most cases, we're not issuing permits for those temporary yard signs. Some cities have, but it's, it's, would be a lot of administrative work to have to issue a permit for a temporary yard signs. So but we'll chat about that as well internally.
We also might want to take into consideration what our sister cities do, Douglas, as well as the township.
Okay. All right, moving on to item E, another one for discussion. Started on page eighty seven of our kits and it had to do with the possibility of discussing whether or not we would allow chickens within the city of Sagatuck. And if so, all the different things that we'd have to factor in in evaluating that. And once again, I'll turn it over to Luke, who's asked David to kind of put together a memo that's in our kit that thinks lays out a lot of the items that we would have to kind of really think through if this was something that we wanted to keep on our agenda as a either low or high priority for 2025.
Yeah. So this has come before us because of a couple of citizens in town that want to get chickens. So they've been obviously reaching out to city council and you guys individually. And you wanted to have this comeback as a discussion topic. So just some things to consider are things like licenses. Are we going to issue licenses if you want chickens? Or are we just going to have a maximum number of chickens? Is the coop going to count towards lot coverage? Are we going to make people submit site plans to add a chicken coop? Because I've got to make sure they can't go over a certain, you know, lot size. We need to consider setbacks and we need to consider not only setbacks from lot lines, you know, we've got to consider setbacks from building lines too. We've got a lot of, a lot of our residential areas are smaller lots and some of those houses, you know, there's a lot of nonconformity in the city of Sagatuck. So some of those houses are built right up to their lot line. So if you have a chicken coop that's, you know, if we say the setbacks are ten feet, you may be ten feet away from your lot line, but you may only be also ten feet away from your neighbor's house. And, you know, we, we just want to make sure that all of our bases are covered and we're sure that this is something we want to implement. And also, you know, I think a lot of the reason, you know, this is in front of you is to see if this is even something you want to move forward with. I think that, you know, it would be correct of me to say that I don't think this is a priority of city council. But we have had a lot of people asking for this. So definitely, definitely a lot of things to unpack with this one. I, I think the first request I saw was only a couple of months ago, but I might not be the best person to answer that question, being that I've been here eight months. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it would be good to get some guidance before we fully dive into it. But I, I, I did review the Douglas one and they don't really use specifics on anything. And they almost give the clerk or designee to assess the applications on a case by case basis. And they consider three factors, which is the size of the lot, the adequacy of the, adequacy of the applicant's plans for housing and confinement chickens, and then other factors relevant to the applicant's particular circumstances. So at least looking at theirs, which is what I imagine we'd model ours after. We don't necessarily have to put in clear rules, but instead we have the discretion. So like you're saying, we have a lot of tight lots, I think those just come in, it's like, no. But then there are some properties in different parts, you know, as we can see from our zoning map, that are bigger lots, where it's not as big of an issue. So something to think about, but I do think before we really devote a lot of resources, I was hoping maybe someone would say something more, but to probably get clear direction.
I think as as the zoning administrator, I would, I would love it if it was pretty black and white and it's standards that are to be met and not a case by case. Because, you know, once you start bringing interpretation into things, you're going to have slightly different interpretations every time there's a zoning administrator. It's just not going to be the same. You want these regulations in place to continue, you know, and not, not be skewed and have different results per person. And it's nice for me to say, yes, you met all the standards, here's your permit and not, I think you're okay. Yeah, so.
Sure. Yeah, I don't want to speak for the council because, you know, council really hasn't made a definitive one way or another recommendation on this. But I will say that there are concerns at the council level with everything, the workload that's currently, the list of priorities that we currently have. Adding to that workload, we just had a strategy session and I think pretty much all the council members said, we can't, we really, the city can't really take any, anything more in the short term. I do know that, and that we're adequate concerns that, you know, we need to get, you know, answers back to, in particular, the gentleman that would raise this as a, you know, as an inquiry. So I believe the city manager did send some emails out, you know, just kind of echoing the same statement that, you know, right now, the council's got a lot on its plate. And not sure this will bump up the priority, you know, into the priority mix for the next year or so, so.
Sure.
Now, I can go back. If, if you're all saying, you know, let's hot potato this back to the council, I can go back and request a direct, you know, a vote as to whether or not we're going to take it on and see where that goes.
Well, I know, I look at it and I, I see this as something that would be very time consuming. I know that what Douglas tried to put together is kind of just guidelines and given a lot of lenience to the city manager and the zoning manager. But when you start to look at this, you start thinking about all the things that we looked at with the short term rental. We had a whole task force and we did surveys and you tried to find out what's the community want. I see we'd almost have to have something like that to support adding something like this to where we really would need to know the majority of the community wants this. And that will take time. And then if you, if the majority did say they wanted it, then it does get down to, how large can a lot be? You know, what is the setback based on way, how the wind is blowing, you know, are you going to smell them? You know, the, do you have to have a cover over the coop? And these are all, this is like, and then in some ways, I started thinking, and Bobby, I'd be curious, what's your thoughts? As I said, well, if we are going to do a, whether it's a full rewrite or a review of the master plan, is it then at a time where we're saying, here's what we foresee, our community, what we want our community, and this is our residential, does this fit into the master plan? And if we change the master plan to allow for such a thing because we think it's beneficial, then we could bring it back and say, okay, how do we now incorporate it? That's kind of my thought. So I do not put it as a high priority for this year because I think we've got to figure out some of the other moving pieces first.
You're here.
Or anyone that feels differently. Seeing none, I think we can get it. I appreciate him also to ask to get to anyone in the community that's listening to this or watching. I would have to say as a, you know, the chair of the planning commission, I would assume for council, when someone does come up with an idea that they would like to see us consider, I encourage them to bring it forward and let us kind of, you know, have a discussion about it. But hopefully they can also understand how we're trying to fit it into the overall priorities of the city. And so thank you for bringing that forward, but at this time, I don't see it moving forward with with us. Moving on to item F, which is the master planning. And again, I think, you know, Dave, you've done a lot of work in this area over the years, as well as Bobby and creating our 2016 one that we're currently operating under. And it's, I think, laid out very well. And it's, I think, laid out very well, you know, some of the thoughts, so I'm going to let Luke speak and then ask you to kind of go through this memo and kind of talk about some of the things. And then we can have an open discussion as to how we might want to move forward with either review or revision of the master plan.
Sure. One thing that I think we should address is obviously, we know that Douglas has recently implemented their, you know, own master plan. And so there were questions as to whether they would like to continue with the tri-community master plan. And I think there's been discussions between Daniel DeFranco over at the township and Ryan here. And there is a question of whether we should get all three planning commissions together for a discussion. They wanted me to sort of gauge your interest on that. I think you're all interested in that, but obviously, you know, this is the right format for me to ask. So is that something that you would be interested in, a joint planning commission meeting to discuss the tri-community master plan?
Yes.
For sure.
Okay. I'll make a note of that, yes.
My other question is, is this in lieu of our own city's master plan? Because right now we don't have a city master plan, we only have the tri-community master plan would, and you just said Douglas did their own.
Yeah, so, so, and that's
That if the three commissions get together, that we would draft just a tri-district plan and that would count as our master plan?
Well, that's part of what the discussion is going to be about, because obviously, yes, Douglas has done their own and potentially they may not want to continue the, the tri-community master plan. But that would be discussed at that meeting. If that isn't something that the other, that, you know, the township and Douglas want to move forward with, then we would look at our own, you know, sole master plan.
Okay.
Yeah. And so I, I will turn it over to Dave.
And on that too, I mean, the, the spirit of cooperation and, and the, the intent of the, the previous effort, I, I think in any case, whether if it's a city-specific plan, a, a two-communities plan or a tri-communities plan, I think we can maintain that spirit of cooperation. You know, for instance, after the, the joint planning commission meeting, if, if Douglas says, well, we have our plan, we adopted it. You know, they may, they, they may still be involved in, in a tri-communities planning effort and maybe they adopt it as a, a supplement to their, their city-specific plan. So I, I think these are conversations that, that can really, we can work out during that joint meeting and, and hopefully, you know, if they didn't want to you even adopt the plan, but, but if they were a partner or if they were, you know, an active stakeholder throughout our process or a two-communities process, I think we just want to maintain that spirit of, of, of regional cooperation. So the memo that we provided for, for tonight, this is kind of a, you know, some of it is, is an overview. I'm not, I'm not sure all of you or many of you have been through a master planning process or know all the steps involved. And then part of this is for to, to try to hear the priorities about what, what you want to include in your master planning process. And, you know, the levels of in public involvements in, in how we want to see this all working. And, and so part of the purpose is to really kind of begin to scope and budget the process. Luke and I have talked a little bit about what a, a master plan costs, you know, based on, on what, what you want to do. You know, that, there's going to be a lot of variables too with, with tri-community involvements and, and you, are, are we having a one consulting team run, facilitate the process, are we, there's a, some of the details that we would need to work out. It's certainly easier and straightforward if you're just dealing with one community, but when you have three, it's, it's just a not an added layer of complication, but it's an added layer of, of coordination and
Complexity.
Yeah, complexity. So I, I won't read this word for word, but as you know, the master plan is your, your vision for the community. It is, it really should be a basis for your decision-making and it, there, it is basis for investments, public infrastructure, land use decisions, and in most cases, for, for your purposes, it influences zoning. So a master plan includes a, a zoning plan, which corresponds future land use categories to zoning districts, as we mentioned earlier. Uh, so the, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires you as a planning commission to review the plan every five years. It doesn't mean you have to, to update it every five years or update it at any interval. But you, you should update it when, when you see that it's no longer reflective of the community priorities and perspectives, or if there's changing conditions or things that you want to include in your master plan for, you know, areas that you want to better preserve or, or, or better, or, or transform. So when the master plan no longer reflects the, the present day conditions or perspectives, you should certainly update it. So the formal steps on, on the bottom of that first page, so we, you would first begin to inform the adjacent jurisdictions and other relevant agencies that are mentioned in the Planning Enabling Act. And then the, really the, the main planning process is this step number two. So that is your public input, that's your assessment of resources, it's your needs assessment, that's developing your goals, principles and actions, working on, on the future land use map. So that step two is really the bulk of this project. That's where most of your, the background work goes in, that's where the public involvement happens. Uh, that's where the, you know, work sessions and workshops occur. And then once you have that formal plan, you, you just begin the, 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 the steps of the process to, to formally adopt, review and adopt the plan. So i- if it is a, a new master plan, it requires a sixty-three day review period. If it's an update to a plan, it's, it's a forty-two, forty-two day review period. And so that's where we, we have to distribute the plan to all of the adjacent jurisdictions and relevant agencies. They have an opportunity to comment on, on the plan, the process. And then once that occurs, those, those timeframes expire, you would have your, your public hearing here at the planning commission level. And like any public hearing, there's a fifteen day notice for that. At that point then, the planning commission would, would make a recommendation and, and approve it yourselves and, and then forward on that recommendation to the city council. So that's really all the kind of the, all the steps in the process based on the Planning Enabling Act. But then again, number two, that, that's that, that planning process is really the one that, that we would need to, to scope out a, as a group here. And if it is going to be a, a tri-community plan, we'd need to work that out with, with the, the partners on this project. Uh, so there's a lot going on that planning process and, and your input over the next month or two would really help to influence the overall scope and, and how much time we're spending on public involvement versus, versus mapping and needs assessments and everything else. So from there, I, I just include a couple of other ideas and, and things to think about. I, I mentioned a character analysis. I find this to be a, a really great exercise and, and this is, now, now I think about this, this is going to be very similar to the, the, or this might be really the, helped by the zoning district analysis. So if we're looking at zoning districts, we're looking at characteristics of those neighborhoods within each district. That's really going to help us with a, with a, a character analysis as part of, of the planning effort. So maybe that kind of goes hand in hand and we could start with looking at the zoning districts and neighborhood characteristics. That really leads right into a character analysis that would be part of your, your, um, planning process. So a lot, a lot of communities, they'll just have an existing land use plan where it just says it's commercial, it's residential, it's industrial. That's helpful, but I think when we're really looking at the character of these neighborhoods, it's, it's much more beneficial to, to our planning process. So in a character analysis, we're looking at, we're looking at things like, you know, sidewalks and walkability and the character of the buildings, you know, bulk and scale in, in the, uh, things that are, they're, they're much more detailed than, than, than just this is residential, this is commercial. So I, I think as again, the, the zoning analysis, district neighbor analysis really just ties itself into, to this really well. Public involvement, obviously, our, our waterfront preservation district process, we, we had a lot of great public involvements. We, we had our, our, I think our pop-up displays at, at various, um, community events, I think we had our, our boards up. So those are the things that we need to think about for, for public involvement. So, you know, we're, we're quickly going to get into the summer months. I mean, maybe that is a really great opportunity to, to begin that effort if, if we can get our coordination with the other communities. So I, I don't think we want to miss out on, on that, that summer season to, to at least get the word out that we're, this process is underway. We're, we're going to want to get, you obviously do, do an online survey, you know, similar to, to the waterfront project. So there, there's a lot of, of public involvement that we, we would want to start scheduling in the summer months, just so we, we know there's going to be a lot of activity, a lot of involvement. We don't want to lose out on that opportunity. And that doesn't mean we, we need to be doing a lot of other work in the background, but we should just prepare to, to make this an opportunity in, in the summer months, in my, in my opinion. I, I talked a little bit about, about effective master plans, talked a little bit about, uh, public involvement and buy-in, so that's obviously very important. So the more people we have involved, the more people we have, um, taking surveys, you know, seeing the results of the plan. When, when we're presenting future land use map options or different visions for neighborhoods or downtown, we want people to be involved, we want that buy-in so that we get to the planning commission hearing and, and council's review. We don't want there to be opposition, we want, we want to gain these allies, we want to gain these partners during the process so that we do all this work, the council's comfortable with, with adopting it. And you, in terms of effective master plans, we, a plan, I mentioned this a little bit later as well. Uh, we can have both a, a policy-based plan and, and a, um, action-based plan. So a policy-based plan is going to be something to where it's really guiding us for when opportunities arise, you know, how are we going to respond to those opportunities? How are we, what type of decisions are we going to make in, in this scenario versus, uh, action-oriented? We're going to say, okay, you know, we need to amend the zoning ordinance to do this. We need to, uh, budget this in, in the capital improvements, uh, plan for, for this particular sidewalk or trail extension. Uh, so we, we may develop actions, uh, and policies, but I think a, a good plan is going to have a, a both of those, an action and policy-based plan. I mentioned before our future land use map, we're going to establish clear land use categories and descriptions. And, and then again, I think the point here with the future land use map is that it, it is not intended to be as rigid and prescriptive a, a, as a zoning district. So we, we allow ourselves in, in the master planning process, um, some flexibility to be able to make decisions during zoning, during zoning updates or during your rezoning requests or so on. So e- even the boundaries of future land use map sometimes are, are intentionally fuzzy so that you can make those decisions. You know, a, a, as a property comes out and it might be right on the line, they have to request for rezoning or something else that we pull back on the master plan. It's not, it, it, not always as rigid as a zoning map. Now, in a smaller community with a smaller geography like this, it may be more rigid. It may, we may say that these are blocks that are, you know, this future land is credit or versus this. So we, we may find it a little bit more, um, rigid, but we still want to build in some flexibility because it is not a zoning ordinance, it is a guide, it's not law. Um, I mentioned, uh, we want to clearly define vision as a part of our plan. I think I mentioned this a couple of years ago when we, when we did a master plan, a training session that, you know, I think anytime that we can include the images, example images, or we even have some, some, some renderings that we could put in the plan, that's anything that can help us to, to define that vision i- in, in, in pictures, in, in, in three D renderings, whatever it may be. As you said, a picture can, can, is worth a thousand words at some point. And so if we could keep this plan, uh, shorter, concise and, and really visually rich, I think that's very important. Actually, one thing I skipped before too about the future land use plan, I think we all know that the, the future land use map in that plan is, is very generalized. I think we have, uh, I think five or six future land use categories in this, within the city limits, whereas we have closer to twenty districts. Uh, that, that's not a ratio, that's, that's super helpful when, when we're making decisions. So it, it, you know, a lot of times we, we could have a one-to-one ratio between a future land use category and zoning. You know, sometimes there might be maybe two districts that, that could, that could implement one future land use category, but we want to get a little bit closer to that one-to-one ratio than, than, uh, than, than one to four. So I, I think we can be a, a more refined, we have a more refined future land use map as part of a, a, you know, the three tri-communities plan or, or if it's a city-only plan, I think we need to ensure that we're, we're a bit more clear on, on the city-specific future land use plan. And then maybe down toward the end there, the city plan versus the joint effort. I think, you know, I, I think there is a strong will here to, to move forward with a more regional plan, obviously. I think that's a, a regional plan ensures a cooperative spirit, includes more stakeholders, identifies issues of common concern. And, uh, but, you know, it can result in a lengthier process with less focus on the city. But so I think whatever we do, we want to ensure that we, we do have that clear focus on, on, on our, on the city, on our more refined future land use category. So it, it would be easier just to keep this as a very generalized plan as a, as it is, but I think we need to push a little harder to make sure we have very city-specific, uh, actions and policies. And it can, can be a little lengthier as mentioned, or maybe a little bit more complex, but you know, it, that may be, that may be worthwhile, uh, based on, on what we hear from you and, and the, the three groups together, uh, hopefully when we meet in the next month or so. Then as I mentioned, a city plan could be a more of a concentrated effort, shorter, more concise plan. But again, I, I don't think, if you go one way or the other, you can still maintain that same spirit of cooperation. Even if you did a city-only plan, that doesn't mean you can't have stakeholders groups or, or coordination or, or, you know, collaborative planning efforts with, with the township in, in Douglas. So I think in any case, we want to maintain that spirit. So I, I think from here, uh, it's, I think we just, a- as we begin to, to look at the, the scope, I want everyone to consider, uh, you know, this, this memo and what level of public involvement? I think that's probably our, our, one of our priorities, it's just to begin to think about what types of opportunities you want in summer months, whether it be pop-ups or open house workshop or a community survey. And I think we need to begin to think about that sooner than later. Then, any, any questions?
Me, go ahead. Assuming we can get cooperation from the entire community, which I think we all agree would, would be the right way to go. And we do this the right way and we get down to a, you know, fairly granular level and really look for, look out for, you know, the foreseeable future and to get, drive the community involvement to find what we want this, you know, what we believe our values will be and all that, right? In your experience, beginning to end, start of the process to the end of the process, I know it's hard, I'm not trying to pin you down to a timeframe, I'm just trying to get a general understanding for, you know, how long it's going to, you think it would take if we're really dedicated, and I think everyone is, right? If we commit ourselves and dedicate to getting this done and done right, it'd be ballpark.
I, I think a, a very aggressive planning process, I think nine months. Um, I think a more, I think a more reasonable expectation would be twelve months.
How long, how long did it take us last time?
It's longer than that.
It's almost two years.
With, with, with the three parties involved, you may, you may, you might want to
Okay.
look at more toward the year and a half type, uh, type timeframe, but
I was more involved in two thousand three and two thousand four, two thousand sixteen was when Bob was progressing with Alzheimer's and so I wasn't that involved. Uh, but in two thousand three, two thousand four, it was, I actually remember it being a little bit longer than a year and a half. I thought it was maybe two years, it felt like two years anyway.
My understanding was it's approximately two years on each of them.
Yeah.
Even though sixteen was almost a rewrite, but it was, it was an update. But that's still, when I look back at it, it was, they started it almost twenty months before it actually got approved.
Right.
So close to two years.
Was it, was it driven by a, I mean, do you kind of lay out in this whole planning process, do we kind of lay out a timeline and kind of some milestones that we want to target and achieve to kind of move this along? Because I could see this just continuing to stretch out if we're not really trying to drive towards specific objectives.
And I don't know what you did in two thousand three and four and sixteen, they, they had members from each of the, the three communities that kind of worked together almost like as a subcommittee.
Right.
And they kind of developed and then they would bring things back to their individual planning. Because it was too much, like the seven of us and the seven of Douglas.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Twenty-one people trying to be involved, so it's almost like how you have, like sometime in council, you'll have like two representatives. And so I, I, that's how it was done the last time anyway. Now, everybody still was involved when you got into the community, you know, inputs and when you're reviewing, but as far as you allowed the committee to kind of be the one to put the calendar together, push it forward and work with the three. I'm definitely interested in hearing if they, if they want to sit down with a tri-community, all three planning commissions and hear them what they have to say. My conversation that I had like with Douglas and kind of through a second channel with township is they each feel that they have many different opportunities than what the city of Sagatuck has. Our city is much more confined, it's smaller and it's really, we have very little, you know, new and future land use. Whereas like Douglas was talking about, they've got two or three major development opportunities that they're currently discussing. Township has got even, even more. And so that's why they were kind of looking at it and saying that And so that's why they were kind of looking at it and saying that they their goals as to how they envision their community moving forward might be very different than ours because they just have more landmass, they have more open space. So I'm just, so I'm curious to see if they want to work together or if it's something that, like you were saying, we could actually develop one for the city of Sagatuck and then do an overlay. Because if township was to do one, then you look at all three and then you kind of see
what's common.
What's common, yeah. Because when I look at the two thousand sixteen one, you know, many of the things regarding our city haven't changed that dramatically. But when I look at some of it and I think about the changes that happened in Douglas or in township or what we're kind of seeing right now, it does seem like it's it's more dramatic. Now, a lot of the demographic stuff definitely, you know, like we have housing things in here, you know, that were laid back to two thousand and twelve or some of it nineteen ninety eight. Yes, I'm sure that that data could be, you know, updated, whether it's for the city or for the region. But I, so I would be, if they didn't want to do it, I think then we have to kind of discuss how do we move forward with just the city one? And then hopefully encourage an overlay at some future point.
I, you know, as you all know, I'm for doing it together. But in the final analysis, it has to get done. And if we don't do it together, the only thing that I think we have to recognize and continue to reinforce is the fact that yes, we are three separate entities, but our customers don't see us usually that way. And there are values that should be common among us.
Exactly.
And if those values are not articulated by us, the three of us as one, then it's we will suboptimize at the end of the day.
And township's even more complicated as how people view it because it's still called, in some sections, it's called Sagatuck and they use the four nine four five three. Part of township is Finnville, you know, and they have their zip coding and their mail service. So it's, but many times people really don't know if you're in the city of Sagatuck or if you're in the township, they just see Sagatuck. You probably get calls all the time.
You preach into the choir there. The first thing I do is tell me what your address is because I just got it double check. I get it a lot.
You'd be amazed in terms of voting. When I've been an inspector for the past two years, the number of people come in who live in Sagatuck Township and they come here to vote.
Oh, sure.
I wonder if a bedrock question, initial question is whether, and I don't know if this is, and that's the thing. I don't know if this is our decision to make solely on whether or not it's a tri-community or individual or whether it is a city council decision to be made. And then they direct us to do a tri-community planning commission, a planning study, master plan, excuse me, or an individual. It would strike me that it is a city council decision, not a planning commission, even though we are under the law required to do the master plan, but isn't it city council? And that's why I may be looking at our city attorney or David. Does it go to city council who then does the discussions with the township and Douglas and then directs us? Yes, you go forward on your own or you do it the tri-community or you do your, we do our own and we do a tri-community overlay. How does that, what, what? Who who has authority to move forward? I'm sorry?
You're asking is it chicken or the egg? No, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I mean, no, I, who should be, who should be reaching out to the township and Douglas? Is it, is it on our behalf or on the city council behalf?
Is the, I mean, I think that's an excellent question, Mark.
And I don't think it's chicken and egg, quite honest with you. I think it's where, where do we start?
I think this starts with leadership, the leadership of the entities and their decision as to what's in the best interest of the community, the tri-community, so to speak. So I would think that in the final analysis, if the, if I would think the councils would have to agree to some at least level of joint participation and then direct us to go do it or figure out a way to do it. But I would think that if the councils and the supervisors of the township are not in agreement, then it would be hard for the planning commission to say we want to do this.
I mean, I appreciate our chair saying that he's talked to his co counterparts on the other two planning commissions and in our zoning administration saying he's talked counterparts. But it strikes me that I I don't want to jump into something and spin our wheels and like, we're not supposed to be. It's inappropriate for us to be doing this because whatever, for whatever reason. It it strikes me that our city council should direct us to proceed with a planning master plan, whether it be tri-community or individual after they've made a determination with the staff support as to how we proceed.
I I think just having, oh, sorry, Trent.
Oh, you're good. I was just going to jump in because it was mentioned. I I'm not aware of a legal requirement either way, but because it involves spending money in in some regards, I think it would be more appropriate from council. But I don't think there's like a necessarily a legal requirement that they have to do it. I think either way it could work.
And I think just in setting their priorities, I mean, they have, they have update land use slash tri-community master plan as a priority. So I think that's enough direction for us to go in that direction.
It is, it is a priority. A council was discussed during our strategy session. And we did go back and forth on, you know, tri-community plan versus, you know, single city plan. Nothing definitive, but the general, from what I understood, the general feeling was it would be good to have a tri-community plan with each individual community having kind of their own little, you know, specific needs, you know, outlay, right? And if it was, could be architected in such a way that that would be ideal. But I'll take the action to go back. We have a council meeting on Monday, so I'll take the action to see if I can get some direction from them on which way they want to go. And then the only question will be whether they want to reach out to the neighboring communities or empower us to do it on their behalf.
I think with that in mind, then, because I'm strong agreement with Bobby on this, I I do think it's on us to at least
I agree.
A recommendation and and I think it'd be good for us to survey real quick because I I do see so much importance in making sure this is a tri-community thing. So if we can send it up with one voice from planning or a majority from planning, that this is a direction we think we should go.
I'm glad you said that because I was going to actually ask that we all weigh in and see if we can get a majority on what direction we think it should go and make sure that that gets brought to the council as well.
On that point, I'll just, I think we are different than either Douglas or the township in the respects that that somebody said in terms of development, in terms of we're already built up, in terms of what we present. But there are commonalities. So my preference would be for us to do our own with a tri-community overlay or to have a tri-community plan of which we have our own. Because I I was just against skimming the master plan and in the portions that apply to Sagatuck are, I won't say weak, but but don't have a lot of punch to them. And that's no fault to anybody who was doing the plan then. I think they were within, they were working within the parameters of trying to do a tri-community plan. And if I were had the Douglas hat on or the township hat on, I might have a similar feeling. But there's a section on like rural development.
Correct.
You know, that's complete hundred percent inapplicable to us. So I won't vote no proceeding with a tri-community plan. But I think that we also need to look strongly at doing something in our own way that represents just the city of Sagatuck because of all the unique things that we've been talking about in terms of development, rezoning, our housing stock, chickens.
I'm glad you said that. I was sort of the same opinion. And I'm looking at it more of the overall time. We talked about two years and the complexity of trying to do a three group with all the differences. And I liked what you said about the our our values and our visions. That's something I think we could have a good tri-community group on where our future land use and our specifics of the city in our plan would be easier to develop without having the complexities of what townships would be. So I I'm also not against the tri-community, but I think for, if I was going to plan all this out for all three, I would say do your own, do your future land uses and then let's come together and have a values and a vision of the area type thing, more than the symbol, single master plan for everyone.
I prefer to have a single document, I'm not sure what that looks like, but I think the stuff for each city maybe could be handled where we each have a module that we plug in.
That's what I thought.
Issues, we get to vote on that, set up, go and go. The average pieces that you need to look at holistically, demographics, et cetera. And things like agriculture, doesn't, pilots.
And I think that's one, when I look at it, we're getting together with the other two planning commissions, I'd like to kind of hear their thoughts also. My, I was just sharing what I've kind of heard from them, anticipating that they kind of view that each of them are somewhat separate. But I do think that, in my opinion, I'd like to see a city of Sagatuck one with that overlay. I think you can start off with like the tri-community. All the demographics can be for the tri-community, your values can be for the tri-community. The characteristics could be somewhat similar. And then you have a city of Sagatuck module, you're saying a module for city of Sagatuck, a module for Douglas, and then a module for the township. And it can still go all in one document, but it's just separated, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's just sort of semantics. I think I I agree with that and
Okay. We're talking about an integrated tri-community plan with each community having their own breakout section that defines specifics to their own area, but we all share a common vision and goals and what have you and speak to the community with one voice in that regard, so.
Am I calling it modules? I think it helps with my concern about the scheduling. Because I think if you tried to get everybody to agree on all those little modules, then it would just take a really long time.
Correct.
Are you comfortable, Austin?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that. I also don't want to lose sight of the fact that we, it's the opportunity for us as a city to also influence things that are in our backyard and areas that we have to go through to get through other parts of the city. So I just don't want to lose that opportunity either.
Right.
To help shape the community as well.
Especially for everybody who lives in the peninsula area, we have to drive through Douglas to get to.
Okay, but we'll need the, we're asking the council for to approach.
If they would prefer, or if they should they prefer to talk to the city councils or should it be Luke?
And this is the vision.
And ourselves.
I think that concludes
Thank you.
Items on the master planning.
Head on, Joe.
In fact, nothing else on that, that would conclude new business communications.
I didn't see anything in the packet. I know Luke's planning zoning report is in the packet, but that's in its own sec- section.
Yeah, I I've had no mail communications. I've had in-person meetings with people. I, you know, I've had a couple of people who are interested in chickens and a couple of people interested, but nothing specific to send to you guys.
And then the report, as we've mentioned, for the planning and zoning report, which again, I find that, I mean, the number of things that you have constantly outstanding and ongoing. But this is kind of helpful. I think it's even helpful to council to kind of be able to kind of see it and to kind of know where we are. My first thing I'm going to get it, I always look through to see which one has, you know, PC next to it. Yeah, so it's, it's going to involve us. But many questions on that or any comments? I think we closed a few out.
Yes, I like that you're breaking it out that way because
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Some of those open cases are open for a long time and a lot of discussion goes in. But some of those closed cases, they look like, oh, that was quick and easy. And that actually was hours of different discussions and meetings and figuring things out. But I just license issued. It's, it's not, it doesn't always display just how much work goes into it. But it's, yeah, it's pretty good.
Which leads us to the last public comment section. So now we entered into the period where anyone can address us with any item that they would like to bring before us. If you would like to speak, you come up to the microphone in the room. Once again, introduce yourself, give us your address and then take up to three minutes. If you're online, just raise your hand and we'll recognize you there. Anyone in the room? Seeing none, anyone online? Seeing none, then we'll close out the public comment section, which moves us to commissioner comments. Start with Bobby this time. We usually start over there, so we'll go this way.
Well done.
No, I'm okay tonight.
A good meeting. I think we got a lot done and appreciate everybody coming here and working hard.
I just want to commend David on his memos. In particular, I thought that the chicken one gave us some ideas and I liked his conclusion on that one. And then also, I, a particular interest or benefit was the master plan memo. I thought that really laid out, you may have, it may be standard what you do for every community, but I thought really laid out like, okay, here's a framework, here's some things to start thinking about. So yeah, I appreciate all your memos this month. Thank you.
Same. Thank you, David, and thank you everyone else for entertaining the two issues that I brought forward. For last minute, it's good to get flushed out. Every, every meeting I I leave being very happy to be part of it, Bobby, and so it's a pleasure to be with you.
I think Mark's already said it very well. I was going to thank David because I thought there's a lot of work that went in there. I appreciate you taking on the task of putting some of these charts together for our future meetings. And so I feel positive that we're moving forward here. We got some direction. With that, I will ask a motion to adjourn. All us in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. It was. Thank you.